Because I'd like to call the meeting to order this evening. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, August the 13th, 2019. Having duly assembled and called the meeting to order, I'd like, if you would, to please join me as I lead us in the pleasure of allegiance, and then if you wish to remain standing for an invocation for our council.
Our pleasure allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Lord, we are indeed grateful for this beautiful day and the blessings that it has held for us. We know that you have ordained our footsteps today and have brought us here to this point for your desired purpose. And we ask that we would be mindful of the needs of each and every one of our citizens tonight as we conduct the business of this city. We thank you for the calling that you have placed upon our lives and allows us to serve others through this position. We thank you for our dedicated employees and those that volunteer their time and services to help make this community what it is. We ask your blessing upon our public safety services workers and those that will be working through the night tonight. We ask all these things in Christ's name and voice, Satan. Amen. Counsel, we set aside at the time at the beginning of each meeting for a public forum session. This is an opportunity for those in the community to speak to items that are on the agenda. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that being, counsel, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting contained in your packet. Those would be for the meeting on July the 23rd, 2019. I'll entertain a motion that they be received. Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing non, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Van.
Yes. Counsel, we have a special recognition this evening, and I am going to ask Norwood-Freely if he would to join me in the front. Mr. Freely is the CEO of Habitat for Humanity in Greenville. And we have had a long and fruitful relationship with Habitat for Humanity of Greenville County. And we are wrapping up their latest project, and we hope to begin saying hello. I would just thank you as I saw Norwood come in this evening. This is now at least the third community that we work in. We've got a total of 35, maybe, I think, more, closer to 50. So this has been an effort that has proven to be a real benefit to our community, and we are always thankful for its help and assistance that we give Habitat for Humanity and the community. And I know any of you in Austin have helped work on this all, and I think you can add this to the list, and hopefully all of you will come, I'm sure. And so we are all in a partnership, and so we're at Habitat for Humanity Habitat for Humanity in Greenville County founded in 1955, the United States, the eighth Habitat for Humanity. Whereas Habitat for Humanity strive to eliminate sustaining housing by providing affordable children, those who need, in Greenville County. Whereas Habitat for Humanity, partner of homeowners, volunteers and sponsors to build not just homes, but homes that provide a sustainable poverty, relationships that are the foundation of community, stronger, safer neighborhoods, where property values are raised from the ground to the roof. Whereas Habitat for Humanity provides more than 360 families, the ability to build strength, stability, self-reliance through affordable ownership. Whereas Habitat for Humanity focuses resources on the city of Greer through the Road Corner project that includes seven homes built for Greer Road Resurrection Church, Riverside High School, the faith community, the United States, Wells Fargo. More than 32 local CEOs now there for Greer City Council and the city of Greer recognize Habitat for Humanity in Greenville County. For dedicated service to those in Greer, infusing human spirit with hope for better tomorrow. I want to present this to Norwood for the work of Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Do you like it on the address?
Well, I would say to all the council and to the members of this community, Greer is just a great partner with Habitat for Humanity. Both have provided volunteers, provided financial support, but also the city of Greer, our construction staff wants to be over there. Let's say it's the best group we get to work with. Don't kill some still. It's just a joy to work over here and be able to make a community that's trying to revitalize itself over Road Corner and this other side of the community to revitalize itself. It's great to be a part of that. I do look forward to more opportunities, and we'll be talking to you about those in the future.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And by the way, Mayor, you're pretty happy.
Yes, they let me paint once, and they've never asked me to do that again. So I'm either swinging a shovel or a hammer, one or the other, swinging a pick or a handle a hammer, one or the other now. Counsel, we do have a petitioner this evening. A petitioner is someone who requests an opportunity to speak to council in advance through the city clerk, and this can be on any matter related to the city. And so Mr. Bryant, are you with us this evening? Mr. Bryant had a concern regarding the railroad. I'm not sure if it was in regard to noise or traffic or what, but Mr. Bryant, if he does come in, we will afford him an opportunity. But Mr. Bryant, are you here? I show a hand. Okay, so apparently wasn't able to make it this evening. So we'll move on. We do have a presentation this evening, and Kirsten Presley is with us. Kirsten is over our courts division, and she is bringing her annual report this evening. Ms. Presley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to come before Mayor and counsel tonight with my 24th year here, not all in court, but 24 years working for the city, and I just want to thank you for that opportunity. As the clerk of court, the Greer Municipal Court is responsible for the administration of justice, we serve the public with integrity, professionalism, and respect while adhering to the laws and procedures set forth by our state. Our goal is to always exceed expectations in all that we do. As in the past years, I always say our courtroom and hearing room uses, again, it's increased about 13 percent this year with traffic court, domestic violence court, preliminary hearings, pre-trial conferences, jury trials, plea days, the Department of Motor Vehicle hearings, the police department uses it. We have training there, leadership Greer, junior leadership Greer, and this year we also added a night where we presented to the Citizens Academy for the police department. We also did have Judge Sims in the magistrate's office that utilized the space, but Judge Sims retired this summer, and the magistrate's office has moved to a consolidated area in Taylor's. So that has left more time for us to be in the large courtroom, which we do utilize. We're in there at least three times every day, seven days a week for our arraignments. And it's much better suited than the small hearing room, as we have outgrown the small hearing room and the number of defendants and the number of victims that attend those hearings. So it's a much safer place for us to hold those. There's more space between the judge and the defendant and any victims or witnesses, and it gives the police a little more area to work between those to make sure that there's safety for everybody there. Our judicial court staff are divided into two sections, the judicial court staff and then the administrative clerks. Judge Terry Murray is over the court staff, the judicial court staff that we have. We have three full-time ministerial recorders or judges, same thing, and then four part-time that rotate weekends and holidays. With this staff, Monday through Friday, we have 21 hours of coverage at minimum, sometimes 24 hours of coverage, depending on what's going on those nights, but we have at least 21 every day during the week. Our newest addition, if you look in the very bottom right-hand corner, is Alexis McElrath, and she actually started yesterday. Some ministerial recorder training and achievements. There's mandatory training required by the state. That's 14 hours of continuing legal education, two hours of ethics. We have mental health and substance abuse training required every three years. There's new proposal for animal cruelty training, which will be two years every three years. So between all of the judges, they varied between 14 to 48 hours of training per judge, which averaged 31 hours, but the total for everyone was 276. We had criminal justice information system training, security and awareness training. This allows us to request and look at criminal histories and driving histories. There's online safety training, and then I hold quarterly in-house training on the weekends for the judges. It's my belief that training is vital, so even though the state has a mandatory minimum, we will never do just the minimum. We will always pack in as much training as we can for the year just to make sure that we're successful and can progress with all the new laws that are coming on board. One of the duties of our judges is search warrants. We have a huge increase this year, almost 60 percent. We went to 140 search warrants. These are warrants that officers need in order to enter someone's home. They're searching their home, they're looking for some type of property, phone records, medical records, computer records. These are the kind of warrants that they have to have to look at those things. So the types of cases that the police work dictate what the number of search warrants for the year will be. Arrest warrants and arraignments, another duty of our judges. This is where their process begins, is with an arrest warrant. They issue those upon request from police, the police officers who have shown that they have met probable cause, that a crime's been committed, and that the defendant is the person who probably committed that crime. So we remain stable this year, 1,753 arrest warrants issued, and we're down slightly with 1,462 arraignments conducted. Like I said, this is the beginning of the process for the judges that we have. Most people never, never step foot into a courtroom, hopefully, but those that have never been in there or never seen the start of the process, I thought this year I would show you. It's an abbreviated version of an arraignment on a burglary suspect from last week. We've edited and edited and edited. It was 20 minutes to start with. I think we've got it down to five, so if it's a little choppy, those are all the sighs and disgruntled noises and signing of paperwork that this person had. We did have victims in the courtroom with us. We don't show them, and I'm hoping it's loud enough. This is going to be Judge Anne Pitts. She's been with us several years, started as a clerk, and then moved to our daytime position of noon to 8:00 P.M. She kind of fills in the gaps for us.
All right. Judge Pitts, right. Thank you, Captain. And this is the home of Lotters, I'm from Greenville County. I started from Lawrence, also from the first. I'm moving the option to be in the official address of the county of this year, following the official setting of the county. If you're here for an answer, show the blue card. Mr. Pratt, I'm the deputy attorney for this former court here. This is not from someone I believe in, but I'm here to write it. The bottom of the chart, the officer who issued the community notice, or should I call and send it to the law? So you're here on three separate charges. The first charge is to be malicious, entering a house with $2,000 for less than $10,000. If you commit this offense, you may be fined by discretion of the court, and have to be fined for prison and is a class of felony. Second count turns, bourbon, first degree. If you commit this offense, you may be sentenced to life in prison and is a class A felony. It's also listed as a violent crime and a no serious offense. The third, absurd, is possession of scheduled weapons, scheduled weapons. If you commit this offense, you may be fined up to $5,000 plus four weeks of imprisonment and for up to two years in prison. Do you understand this charge and possible penalties? If you were arrested on this charge, you have certain rights. You're allowed to be inside, you're allowed to be starting, if you cannot afford to turn on a criminal investigation, you may be sent off. You're allowed to be present at trial, you're allowed to be at a jury trial. If you are not present for trial, you are a little word bashy, and if that's a music, eventually you should be issued an arrest for a felony. All these charges, you get a guilty, or a charge of intent, you may be eligible to have this published, that is included in the record. You want to add a letter? Mr. Pratt, I want to ask you additional information, why do we care? If you commit a duty on this charge, or if you're felony on this charge, you're allowed to ask for payment, plan to give the amount of pay. We have constitutional right of attorney, that's whether you have a private time, or you have a total of three dollars for a potential on this charge. If you do not plead attorney, not satisfied at your trial, judgment is likely to give up that house from your attorney, and you will be under arrest. You must again, completely dangerous for you, because you may not have the evidence for possible incarceration, and it's starting by the position of those. So if you ignore occupation, contract, or date, and you're not present for, you're basically involved multiple times. These kind of cases are called a must be, or is a better, what we're mentioned. If you change your status before the actual trial, you will still request, providing general sessions for your arrest. If you violate any provision of law, you may be sentenced additional charges and force for your arrest issue. Any question on that, sir? You know what a luminary hearing is, sir? If you're trying to have a luminary hearing in these cases. And so your first appearance in our road hall is charged, is a criminal crime, October 25th, and at a, in the Greer County General Sessions courthouse, is located in 305 East Sports Group, the I-96, Southern courthouse. And it's a mandatory, your first appearance in a hall, you must appear before that day. Any question on that, sir? And also, possibly have a term of sentence by that day. Mr. Pratt, as I will be the period for those who are as involved, here, you know, the total of the general sessions, that will be a free hearing on this, do a workout when you repeat the speaker coming around all day. If work continues, you may have a lot of, a lot of issues. I am only here to look at the stop, we should ask most of them. We didn't have a good time. Is that a good sign? Mr. Pratt, the first step is having to be able to prevent any of the outside work. I have a reasonable request, I'll give several chances, so I will be aware of any of the outside work, so that means our duty, our duty, or the emergency, that we're including this other spicy place in person, and obviously this residence, you know, properly, this type of work, or school, or instance, is known to be, that if you can't have contact on social media, or leave their apartments, no contact whatsoever. And if you go to the local grocery store, visit in there, you must immediately leave, without knowledge, you know, the shop somewhere else. And if you try to contact you, not follow the message you're in the neighborhood, you do not return that contact, do that fully contact under the gap. Does that clear something? None, it's a sign, you should have no contact at all conditions. Mr. Pratt, in the nature of this, allegations, at this time, not who you are in the bar, you can't have that bond, but that means you start as a duty, your man is a customer in the correct category, so you set up to go for serving for damage, that serving for or judge, which is your case, you have, you'll make a decision, shoot a decision, further not who you, release on bond, that's out of bond. But for now, you not double the bond, you can't have that bond, any question on that, sir? I'm sorry. Last very question, how should you address that?
Okay, that's the end of it. I know a little long, but again, we pared it down from 20 minutes. A lot of what's in there now was not something required a year ago. It changed with some new procedures from the chief justice, so it did make these hearings much, much longer to make sure that we're giving them all of their rights multiple times during one of these hearings. Also says that we handle everything from a speeding ticket all the way up to charges that do carry life in prison. So even if it's a murder case, that murder warrant comes out of our report first. One of the terms that Judge Pitts used in there was a preliminary hearing, and we held those for Greenville County, not Spartanburg. We had almost the exact same amount this year as last year, 2 percent decrease, but we had a 6 percent increase in the actual charges. So we had 257 suspects that had a total of 469 charges. This is a probable cause hearing where the defendant goes in front of a judge who did not issue the warrant, and that judge makes a second determination whether there is enough probable cause in reform for the case. My administrative court staff, as went by Suzette Ashley, she did get married this year, I called her the wrong name for about six months. Just wanted to put this up here to make sure that I thank you for the new position that we'll be advertising for, which is the part-time jury trial coordinator. As soon as we get the job description put together within the next month, we'll be advertising for that. That will help tremendously because right now Suzette, who's the deputy clerk of court, also has to handle all the jury trials, so that will give her much more time to do her actual job. Some of the training and achievements for the clerks is continuous maintenance and monitoring of all files and programs, fostering partnerships with our service providers, training in-house and at various conferences. Some of the conference topics that they go to are domestic violence, child abuse, human trafficking, ethics. They have training from NAMI and Municipal Court Administration Association, provides a lot of training. We go to as many of those as possible. There are no requirements for the clerks as far as number of hours that they train, even though the state does not have that currently. I do require them to go to it, and we are going to start a program through the municipal association that I'll be participating in over the next year, where I will travel four different times a year with training, kind of like a clerk's 101, to begin training from the beginning. That will be something that I help put together the curriculum and teach that. As of right now, there's no set standard, there's no policy or procedure book for just clerks, so we're going to be putting that together for all of the clerks in the state. We've got service on city committees, such as Collette Patello is on the wellness committee, Erin McGowan is on the grievance committee, I'm on the safety committee, and Terry Murray is on the employee recognition committee. I've also been learning a new system for electronic dispositions for SLED. Last year we learned e-ticketing, and now that those go electronically, now the dispositions go to SLED electronically, so much faster, and it's more precise. Still something new to learn. We've also had online safety training, victim service provider training, which is required every two years for anyone who has contact with victims of crimes. And then the security and awareness training is every two years for the clerks as well. Our cases filed and disposed, these are the cases that the police department make. It's whether they're warrants or tickets, this is the cases that they have brought to the court. This past year, it was 5,521 cases that were filed, and the clerks were able to dispose of 5,889. Cases do carry every year to year because of jury trial requests. Most courts, it's a year to two years from the time you request a jury trial to the time that you get one. We have about a three-month lifetime, so we're probably in the top four or five in the state as far as getting them through the process as quickly as it's supposed to go. Bench warrant activity, this is a topic I touched on last year because we had just gotten new procedures from the chief justice of South Carolina Supreme Court. We did know that the bench warrant activity was going to go down, we just didn't know how far down it was going to go, and this year we're down another 45 percent as far as the bench warrants that are issued, and 151 bench warrants were disposed of, which is down 61 percent. The procedure just takes a lot longer to go through, and we have to give each person many, many more chances before we can actually get to a bench warrant for either failure to comply or failure to appear. Jury trials, we had a decrease in scheduled cases, which was a good thing. It's because we don't have as many as we had the year before. We were able to keep up with them better. We had a 45 percent increase in the ones that were disposed of, but a 55 percent decrease in continued cases, which is also a good thing. Those were cases that the attorneys were able to work through without us having to go to trial, which is a fairly large expense for us. We only average maybe two trials per jury trial term now. Most of the 60 to 70 cases we schedule, the attorneys work out between them now. Expendments, all I'm going to say this year is there was 399 were processed, which was a 37 percent increase from the prior year, and we'll just assume that from this point on, it will continue to go up. Challenges for all of us, for our entire team, new procedures dictated by the South Carolina Court Administration. This includes new and updated forms, anything that the judges need to know how to do, the clerks also need to know how to do. New case law, which can change the interpretation of laws that are already on the books, and keeping up with legislation that will impact the city, such as new laws that are to be enforced, including learning the elements and penalties of those laws, new laws that impact procedure, binding fee schedules, new laws that dictate the times for the submission of paperwork from the court to the DMV or SLED, as well as how it's transferred to those agencies. Expendment laws and amended laws, laws that were already on the books, but they've changed either an element of the crime, or maybe a penalty, or the class that it is. The clerks and judges all have to know all of these. Strategic plan, because we're a reactive department, we don't get to show up very often in a strategic plan. We do, though, take very seriously the customer service program, and we're constantly working to improve that. Domestic violence, this is something that we've taken very seriously here with our own DV court that we established several years ago. And just to touch on that, that is still a program that we use. We have that every month. As of the last statistics, which were 2017's, South Carolina was still sixth in the nation for domestic-related homicides. There were 40 of those in 2017, 29 women and 11 men. People don't look at the fact that it is women and men that are victims, and as far as there have been records kept, South Carolina's always been in the top 10. So we take the position that everybody should take a part in terms of our displaced numbers, and that's why we include that in any presentation that we give to any group, even the Police Citizens Academy, we did a pretty significant portion on that. Just without breaking that cycle of violence, South Carolina will never get out of the top 10. That's something that they should strive for, one in four women, one in seven men. Those are pretty staggering statistics for our state. From bad to the good, team building, it's something that we love there. We celebrate everything, so if there's, this year we had a bath shower, a baby shower, we celebrate birthdays, and we do a Christmas party outside of the office, working lunches on the weekends, breakfast meetings on the weekends, food day, game nights, anything that you can celebrate or that is important to one of our team members, we celebrate with them. And our total money collected, it was down this year. Again, this is something we expected due to the procedural changes from the Supreme Court, so we were down 9 percent. We collected $640,661.90. Out of that, $221,474. Out of that, $221,474.35 stayed in the city. And of course, I have to end with Judge Jones. So a few years back, he likes that picture, so we'll keep using it. And Judge Ike Johnson and Judge Jim Cowmice who come and fill in whenever he can't be there with us. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Ms. Presley, are you still personally handling the expungements?
Yes, I am.
At 400 last year, we are over 30-plus a week at this point. I'm not, I guess, at what point is the tipping point? I know we've got a part-time person helping now with coordinating the jury trials. Do we need to begin to think about a part-time person to help relieve you of that responsibility?
I'm hoping to use that person for both, actually, because we've tipped that point.
We've passed that point.
So yeah, so that's kind of our, we're hoping that on non-jury terms, that that court will be able to assist in those. Really, it goes through about five people that have to test it before it's completed.
All right, thank you. Others?
You mentioned that the bench warrants or issuing the bench warrants are down. Are you saying that's tied to the amount of money that we're currently collecting? I mean, obviously, if it's supposed to give them more warnings and opportunities to come in, it doesn't necessarily seem to be leading to more compliance at this point.
It does not lead to more compliance. So I think it probably does have an effect on that. In the past, we could easily issue, I mean, there's years where we issued, and then there's a thousand in a year. And now the process is so much longer, and there's so many different parts to it, so many continuances in between them, that to get 150 or 200 maybe out of the next year will be, that's probably as relative as it gets. And it's failure to comply, so whether they don't show up, or they don't pay or participate in whatever program or alternative sentencing, it takes a much longer time to get to the next warrant.
I'm glad you showed the arena, too. That was really good. I was just curious, you know, I noticed you mentioned the repetition of the fact that the judge has to repeat things over and over. Is there like a teleprompter up there or some type of script?
No.
Because a lot of stuff that the chief governor is very detailed.
They say that so many times a day, they probably say it in a week. They do start with a script. When we're training them, we do give them a script. But Judge Pitts doesn't, she hasn't needed one for quite some time.
Wow. Others?
Well, certainly give our thanks to your staff and to the judges as well for all that they are doing to keep that very vital and important process going as smoothly as it does. We just hope you've got another 24 years in you that you're going to continue to work on and keep things going.
But thank you.
Mr. Griggers, administrator's report this evening, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. A couple items to report to you. One is a reminder that our candidate filing period does end at noon this Thursday, and so that will close at noon again on Thursday. Friday night will be an exciting evening for us here in the community. It's one of our triennial food truck rollouts. There'll be music and, of course, several food trucks, there'll be some entertainment, bouncy houses, those types of things. Friday evening here in the park between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Certainly hope your schedule will allow you to come out and enjoy that time with our community as well. Next week, there is a Greer Chamber legislative luncheon. That's a little bit different than the format that they've used in past years. They will have representatives from the State Chamber of Commerce meeting with them, as well as they are setting the legislative agenda, both for the State Chamber of Commerce as well as our local Chamber of Commerce. We will be working with them on legislative items as the municipal association prepares those as well. But that is happening next Tuesday, or on Tuesday, the 27th. It's an 11:30 meeting, and so if you have a desire to participate in that, need us to help you with the registration on that, please just let us know. I've got a couple of folks that have already indicated their intent to participate in that, and we're glad to help get you signed up for that. Center for the Arts, again, a reminder that the Center for the Arts grand opening is on September 20th, 21st, and 22nd. We were made aware this week of some of the entertainment that'll be taking place on Friday evening. That is a ticketed event. It is a fundraiser for the Center for the Arts. Neil Pendolfi, Pendolfi, which I don't know, obviously, but a renowned pianist will be with us that evening. We also have Noah Guthrie, a songwriter, performer that will be there that evening, and also an artist by the name of Jared Emerson, has been in that area before doing artwork, but he will actually perform a piece of art that evening, and that art will remain with us on site at the Center for the Arts for us to continue to use moving forward. Saturday is a fun-filled day there. It's really a community day for folks to come and get to experience the new park, to experience the center. There will be entertainment throughout the day. I understand that one of our very own is one of our performing artists that day, so Mr. Bettis. We're looking forward to a performance by you and your group on that Saturday. And so we've got lots of entertainment happening in the park and inside the facility that day as well. And then on Sunday, we will host an open house. It's an opportunity for the community to come in, tour the facility, meet the artists and residents that will be there on site, and get familiar with their new community Center for the Arts. So again, a wonderful evening, that's September 20th, 21st, and 22nd. We have set aside a couple of tickets for each of you for Friday evening, so we will just need to know if it is your intent to be able to participate that evening, and we will hold those for you. It's a limited capacity event on Friday evening. They are only providing 200 tickets that evening, so we are quite confident that it will sell out very, very quickly, and we wanted to make sure you have your place there. So I'll have some additional information coming to you, just to let us know of your attendance plans for that weekend as well. And the last thing I want to make you aware of is that as soon as we move past the Labor Day weekend, we will be closing Kids Planet. That will be shutting down that portion of Century Park as we start to prepare it for demolition of the old equipment in that site. The first thing that we'll be doing will be removing the keepsake items, the tiles, the tickets, any of those things that were originally placed on that site that was used in recognizing people in our community, those will, that'll be the first order of business for us as we start to do the demolition there. We then will start removing the equipment, and then once the equipment is removed from the facility, we'll start site plan work, getting the grading and everything prepared. And so that's a big day for us. Following the actual day of Labor Day on Tuesday morning, we will be closing that park. And it will remain closed through the winter, and then as we prepare to open it in spring of 2020, the new format that we've shared with you previously. So just wanted to give you a couple of calendar items, couple reminders, things that we are participating in now. Certainly glad to answer any questions that you may have at this point. And as always, myself, our staff is available as we leave from tonight as well to answer any questions, make sure you get any information you do that you may need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have been seeking someone to fulfill Julie DeHuyt's position on the board of architectural review. That seat has been empty since DeHuyt moved from the community, and you have the for you this evening of a graphical sketch and nomination for someone to fill that position. Mr. Mac Mahon, are you going to bring us information in that regard, or just getting an early start on getting up here?
I'm going to retell with Mr. Burge. Mr. Burge has shown some interest after receiving a recommendation from Councilman Arrowood. Whatever how the format is for the meetings and the required training, and he is really looking forward to it if it is counsel's desire.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arrowood, I will let you make that motion then.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we filled this position with Mr. Eddie Burge. He has, and most of us know him, he has, he's lived in Greer, worked in Greer all his life. His family was the former owners and founder of Greer Citizens. He has been from the downtown Greer, where you could have bought it all for about $360,000 to now he can buy a building for that. He's covered it, he's lived it, and he still serves as well. So I think he'll be a good person for that position.
Comes as a nomination to hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion in that regard?
I think Eddie's an outstanding choice. I really do. Who knows Greer?
Others?
Who knows where else to go with him?
With that, we'll vote, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to items of old business before us this evening. It's the second and final reading of ordinance number 21-2019. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Mr. Allen Cullen located at 997 and 999 Victor Gil Road by 100% petition, and to establish his zoning classification of I-1 industrial district listed properties. Mr. Brandon Mac Mahon joins us. Does he have any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 21-2019, sir?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 21-2019 went before a planning commission on July 22nd. They made a recommendation of approval for the I-1 zoning request. Staff is requesting to amend the ordinance for the acreage, also exhibit B and C to reflect a reduction acreage from 5.73 to 5.5. The property line originally went to the center line of the road. That property line has been moved out of the right of way, so that is the reason for the reduction in acreage. That is all the information we have at this time. We would like to answer any questions.
Good. Any other motion to receive for the purpose of discussion?
I'll make that motion with the changes.
And the changes are in the document you have before you.
Yes. Have a motion and a second at this point. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
Who made the second?
I did. We want to recognize and thank Mr. Cullen for joining us this evening. Thank you, sir, for being here. I also appreciate all that you do in our community, and thank you for the work that has gone in to do this effort. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. We'll move to the second item before us this evening, the second and final reading of ordinance number 27-2019. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of properties owned by Spartanburg County and Duke Power Company located on Victor Avenue by 100% petition, and to establish his zoning classification for DRD, which is our designer district listed property. Mr. Mac Mahon, any new or additional information in that regard?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ordinance 27-2019 went before a planning commission on July 22nd, and the commission recommended the approval of the DRD zoning request. Staff would also like to request amendment for exhibit F, the statement of intent. This has been updated to reflect that the internal roads will be private and not public roads. That is all the information we have at this time. We would like to answer any questions you may have.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the second and final reading of ordinance number 27-2019, as long as amendment F is recognized in the motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Comments?
With the DRD, will you be, will the finalized plan be brought back before us, or does it get approved by?
It will be approved by planning commission, sir.
Okay, all right.
Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. Counsel, last item of old business this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 29-2019. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the city of Greer. Mr. Griggers, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance 29-2019?
No, sir. No additional information or new information. As a reminder, this is the property that's located at the corner of Point Set Street and Spring Street. This is when the property, the Spring Street was straightened up. This is the residual piece to the side of that to be conveyed to the adjoining property owner.
I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Downer?
Yes. Counsel, we'll move to items of new business, the first of which is the Brookshire Road condition. This is an issue that counsel has discussed on several occasions. Staff is requesting guidance from counsel on this issue, and given options as they are presented. Mr. Grant will lead this discussion. Forward here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Yes, sir. Just want to talk a little bit about the Brookshire Road area and Brookshire Road itself. Brookshire Road, the line of green, it's a little issue, it's going to be in the fourth and the W. on 101. This area is transitioning to industrial. If you've been out there lately, I'm sure you've seen that. Here's another picture of the newer end of the road, where specifically we're going to be talking about. The south end is currently a lot of industrial and commercial use, and the north end is kind of transitioning, as I was speaking of. You see the south end is a 30-foot commercial industrial road functioning well. The other right picture, you can see in the distance, it transitions down to a 16-foot dip section. Here's the pictures of that section, about 2,000 feet, 16-foot wide, and the shoulders are being damaged by truck traffic, and that's kind of what we're here to discuss. We first discussed this back at the council retreat, you may recall. Since the retreat, I've had two initiatives kind of running concurrently. I'll explain. One is part of our road improvement program I've been trying to get going. I have a contract with a traffic consultant to study three roads, Brookshire being one of them. The study will evaluate traffic use, geometry of the existing road, intersections, turning movements, intersection functionality, future traffic forecasts, and then make recommendations for future improvements. The second initiative is we've been evaluating any temporary measures we could do out here to, you know, to keep the problem from getting worse. Met internally with staff, met other traffic engineers and civil engineers out on the site, and the bottom line is we really could come up with no good temporary measures that would, you know, fix the problem that wouldn't be very expensive or require a lot of maintenance, basically daily maintenance. The aforementioned study I was talking about will take several months to complete, and then, of course, the design and construction will have to take place after that. In the meantime, this issue on Brookshire is getting worse. So I've been also getting periodic complaints, mostly from the business owners who have businesses there. I did take the liberty of exploring more permanent fixes with a local experienced contractor, and we have several options, and I just want to kind of just put those out there and let's discuss them. Option one, we could always put a no-through truck traffic signage up, but then enforcement would become an issue, and then, of course, push back from the local businesses, rerouting trucks, et cetera, around, because there's a way around this. I was out here today, a truck came from Brookshire I mean, um, I was out here today, a truck came from Brookshire and it went to the port. The court thought that he could go one-on-one to aid and go around, but he didn't choose to go that way. So, that's an option. We could post it for no trucks, and we'd have to, you know, enforce it. Option two, we could wait on the results of our study and then, uh, and then make the proposed improvements. For example, the, the study may show that we should widen the entire road to thirty feet, despite the first half, and, you know, make the necessary, uh, widening and buy right of way, et cetera. Um, that option's probably a year away, realistically, to get it done. Option three and four came from a paving contractor, uh, number three being a conventional, uh, full-depth patching mill and resurface, um, for the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Option four being CMRV or cement monolith, five reclaimed base. Uh, that's a process we've used successfully over the last few years, reclaiming some roads. The cost for that option would be one hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Both the contractor options actually widen Brookshire four feet on either side. So, the total width would go from sixteen to twenty-four feet with both those options. It would still be a ditch section. Um, if we went in those directions, the contractor likely started sometime in October. Uh, staff is just wanting to get this issue and these options in front of you for your consideration and direction. Uh, again, this area is transitioning to industrial, commercial, and this is a sixteen-foot wide road that's not able to handle what it's carrying. Sorry, I was so wordy. I just felt like I needed this background to kinda fully evaluate what's going on out there. I'll be glad to clarify anything or answer any questions, uh, you may have.
Council? So, if you went to the thirty-feet match for the, for the northern part, how much more, does that involve buying right of way, you said?
Yes, sir. Probably out of this area right here, it's only like forty-two wide out here by the bridge, it's in the seventies, probably in pretty good shape. Also, if we give you a thirty-feet, we're probably realigning that intersection to make it a ninety-degree, now it comes in at somewhere at angle like forty-five degrees. My recommendation would be make it a ninety-degree angle, which would require some right of way as well.
Do we have any, any estimate at this point, Mr. Grant, on what the cost would be to do that? I mean, I, I know the right of way makes it kind of a shot in the dark.
Yes. Uh, I don't really have an estimate. That's part of what the, the, the consultant would help us come, but, but I know a figure, seven hundred thousand a mile, or something like that. So, uh, it's a number, so it's, it'll be a big number, much bigger than, you know, the paving charges.
I've got a couple of questions. One, you know, that, that area, you're exactly right, it's true. Well, you know, what's in the city is transitioning, and when it comes to the city, it, it becomes industrial, but you, you talk about the truck traffic that's not serving the, the businesses on that road, but they're going to the port. Um, as that, as the, the area completely, or, you know, what would we consider complete transition's over, is that still optimal route for truck traffic to do that, or is that just because it's, it's, it's very convenient for the truck drivers, but it's still not, it's still unproven?
I think it's, my opinion is it's convenience. I know.
It is. My son has asked them at the port out there, and they say it cuts a lot of time off for them, and that's exactly why they do it.
As, as a reminder, when, when the port, um, was planning to build their operation here, through truck traffic was a big issue for us, and we addressed that with the port's authority. Um, and, and what they indicated at that time was, was two things to help us, is one, the support with SCDOT to establish truck routes in our, in our vicinity that is enforceable. Uh, and so with their, with SCDOT's understanding, we developed those routes, uh, those routes were approved by SCDOT, they were approved by this city council. It does give us the authority that if trucks are not following truck routes, we have the authority to cite them for non-compliance. Um, as Mr. Grant indicated, that's an enforcement issue and the availability of traffic control and those types of things. Um, what they also indicate, the other part of that that they indicated, is that there would be a designated route in and out of the port that would be communicated to all truck traffic. Um, I do think, no matter how, no matter how we proceed to improve this road, I do believe that we still need to go back to the port's authority and work with them on trying to get that traffic that uses it for convenience sake rerouted to the designated route. You are supposed to take I-85, Brockman-McClyman, one-on-one, Burn Smith Parkway to the port. That is the designated route off of I-85. Uh, if you're coming off of Highway twenty-nine, then you're gonna come in on Burn Smith Parkway from that direction as well. Those are supposed to be the only two access points to that property. It's obvious that we've got folks that have learned other ways. Um, now, whether or not GPS will take you that way or not, it, that's possible, but we have tried working with, um, with, with Google Maps and folks like that to set up those, those directions off of the main highways. My personal belief, and Steve and I've had some conversation, is that, um, heavy truck traffic on this road, even improved, will have wear and tear much greater than it certainly would have without. We will have truck traffic, we just don't need truck traffic that's cut through truck traffic. We need to root, to limit that truck traffic to those that are serving businesses off of Brookshire.
But is it possible, um, let's see, on the, if, if we're going away from one-on-one, don't, in that picture there was, uh, the, the, uh, pine trees on the left. Bring that back up, we'll get forty of those. Okay, on the, okay, here we go. On the left side, is that developed property, or is that, who is that on by? Do we know?
Airport.
It's airport?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is that, is that in there planned to be developed, or is that, or do we know, or is that part of the safety, or do we know that?
I, I don't know that.
I talked to Kelly and McCormick, our planning manager this morning, that as of now, we, we don't know of any plans out there. Obviously, they could develop it next month, but we just don't know anything from them.
Well, just throwing out some ideas, I mean, you know, the, the reason is, or it's time or speed to go from point A to the port. Well, if, if we were to take this road, it, it needs to be reworked. We can do some modifications to it, but do, uh, traffic calming or one-way or until, until we get to the point where it needs to be thirty-foot width. Um, I mean, I, I, I think that these entrances, and you know, I've spoken about that, that entrances to the, these two businesses, that, that probably should be something very significant, like a concrete path. That's, that's my opinion, but if, if we were to take the rest of the roadway and do something that, uh, causes the slowdown of the truck traffic, then they're not gonna, they're not gonna do it.
Right.
They're gonna go the other way. So, um...
I know it's pretty bad to current now.
Well, not, not why, yeah, I understand that, but I mean, if there's ways that we can, I mean, I, I, you know, I hate to, to rebuild a road, um, because people aren't following the path they're supposed to follow, and instead of, the paths they're supposed to follow, uh, are funded by the state, because they're going to a state agency, and that benefits everybody, but this is a city road, and, you know, that comes out of the pockets of our citizens, so, um, if there's some way, if there's some sort of traffic calming, I, I, I don't know what you could do, but...
Certainly good consideration, yes, sir.
Well, if, if we don't, we're gonna be right back in the same situation, yeah. Because, you know, if you run that truck tank, that's gonna eat that road up again.
The only risk we run is that, usually it's fifty-fifty, fifty percent people hate traffic calming and fifty percent like it. Some half the people out there are probably calling their parents, "Why did y'all put that out there if you built that nice road?"
Our taxpayers, our taxpayers would, would probably like it, so, because they're not having to pay for something that, you know, that's, that's not their, right, issue.
Are there big tractor trailers that, uh, that do business on that, or that actually do business on Brookshire?
I can't speak for all of them, but I did follow him one day, and he left the business on Brookshire and went to the port. And I, I was there when he came in, too, so I saw him come in that direction.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how much traffic is it that services those businesses on Brookshire?
Truck traffic?
Yeah.
I don't know. That'd be part of that study that I was talking about earlier, was kinda when it's good, good ground.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, first of all, when we were talking about it, was no through, you know, tractor trailers or no eighteen-wheelers or something like that, so I was just wondering what type of traffic is normally on?
Yeah, well, and, and I was thinking about that when I was getting ready to speak, uh, but, you know, where this road terminates, it, it's really not, uh, I guess it's still a roadway that you would consider rural type. It's not why it's designed, and, and so even businesses that are serviced probably ought to have that traffic coming in off one-on-one and then exiting back out to one-on-one to Brookshire.
Yeah, I would, I would suspect that the bulk of the through traffic on that road's coming from, from the border BMW, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah.
So, enforcement, one of the, one of the possibilities then for enforcement would be no-through traffic?
Uh, we, 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 local delivery only, no-through traffic, no-through truck traffic.
Oh, my poor traffic.
Yeah, um, now, the situation that Steve experienced today, um, it is, so, obviously we would have some port traffic that would have a need. If they're, they're making deliveries to or from a Brookshire Road facility, that's gonna be the path that they're going to take. It, it's the cut-throughs, um, that have just found it as a shortcut, that, that probably give us the greatest concern, um, that's, was again, those, those large trucks just create an enormous amount of wear and tear, um, on those streets.
They'll run into the, um, thing of having to stop for that train down there sometimes, wouldn't they, when they cut through there?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, 'cause that traffic, I mean, they can sit there forever waiting on that train to go by.
I, you know, I...
That would be a indication not to go that way to me.
You know, personally, I, I, if I had my brother, I'd, I'd rather see us just extend the curb and gutter and the, and the wider, more truck-traffic-oriented, um, paving that we've got on the upper end. On the other hand, there is a bit of sense of urgency about this, because you can, you can tell by the alligatoring on there that we are literally down to the dirt in some places in that road, not just in the ditch areas, and, um, I'm not sure that we've even got a year to wait at this point on that road, and I think my inclination would be, um, to go with one of the first two options, and probably the first option. I, I think there's a possibility that, um, at least, at the very minimum, uh, that, um, we either have this council or administration, um, look for others that, uh, that, that might be willing to find a funding source to help us on this, and, uh, if not, we'll, um, we'll just make a dedicated effort to, to get it done, because, uh, if we don't do something with it in the next year, it's gonna, it's gonna disappear.
This is in Spartanburg County, so my intent was to go to Spartanburg CTC and try to do a fifty-fifty match, or a fifty partnership.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I don't have a qualm about, you know, asking the, the board or the state, either one, to help us with that as well, too.
Beyond, beyond fifty, too. Beyond this, that, uh, looking at the picture on the upper right, beyond that building on the right, uh, is, are there residences? I can't remember.
I think there's at least one.
Yes, there are.
There's a couple in there, yeah.
And now, but do they have driveways that go onto Brookshire, or do they empty out on, um, yes?
There's some, there's some.
Driveways out of the, driveways out of the Brookshire, because the other thought that came in, in my head just now as we were, um, talking about enforcement, if you made from the, from the good section of Brookshire all the way back, uh, or down to the...
Bickerfield.
Yes, make it one-way. And then, that, that's my key, your far and important, I mean, I, I don't know if that, that helps, or if that would...
You know, the onus, the onus there becomes, what if you work at BMW, you're going home to one of those houses, you gotta go out all the way down to the Burn Smith, and then all the way back around and come back in the other way, so, you know, there is one cut through the street right there where you can get across up Victor Hill, but still, it's not as convenient. I think, I think our best bet would just be some...
Either, either the traffic calming issue or, or targeted enforcement of some kind from time to time.
Well, maybe both, and then you said you preferred, um, possibly propose a number one, but I know Steve prefers number two. Could you elaborate on why you think two would be better?
The CMRV?
Yes, sir.
Well, two reasons. I think overall, it's a better product in the end, and two is actually cheaper, so it's, it's a, it's a win-win. It, it actually, the process rebuilds your base, the gigantic machine, what, it, in two of these rooms goes through and grinds the, the existing asphalt up in four to six inches of the base, and it makes important cement with it and water, and then set it up as a brand-new base, and you've basically gotta hold you the road. Plus, it re, reuses all the asphalt, so you don't call off asphalt, it's, it's environmentally friendly, so it's, it's a win-win.
I don't have a present, I, I, I wasn't thinking about that, so, I mean, I'd be up to, I'd be up to staff recommendation, but I wouldn't have a problem with that, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, basically.
Just one, just a little, and that, one forty-four thousand. Mr. Cypher, anything that you can assist on, on the financial side?
Thank you, Mr. Diggers. And, uh, for your consideration and, and looking at these options that Mr. Grant has proposed, um, if you think back to our budget, we have, um, our paving fund, which we increased the funding this year to about four hundred fifty thousand dollars, and when we're working on, administratively working on the budget internally, uh, we were unofficially notified that Greenville County was going to fund a higher level of the paving program than they actually ended up doing. So, internally, we kinda dedicated about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the paving program, but they came back and only funded a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So, there's, um, in excess there, uh, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars that would be available for, you know, one of these options should be choose to do that, and then as Mr. Grant had suggested, he would be recommending or requesting a fifty-fifty match from the CTC from Spartanburg County. So, again, for, for your consideration, there is a possible force that should you want to go around this route.
So, how does that affect other streets that are on the list?
Right, that's what you're talking about doing. We've got that list, and we get that money, well, we're talking about taking the money away from those streets, put it out here, right? That would be...
It, it just makes it longer to get to the list. Yes, sir.
But we would still be dedicating our hundred ninety-seven thousand with Greenville County or...
We, we were hoping to get about eight hundred thousand dollars for the paving. They, they're, they're matching the one ninety-seven or whatever, so we're gonna get about four hundred thousand of, two hundred of their money, two hundred of our money. So, we're gonna get about half of what we had hoped we would get. We, Mr. Cypher's point is that we, we have the dollars, it's a matter of do we use those dollars here, do we use those dollars to continue paving off of the road paving plan, uh, as well? 'Cause typically, what we would do is we would, we would instruct the Transco to keep going down the list until we've depleted our funds.
Well, question then, this is, this is Spartanburg County. We, we use a different process altogether for Spartanburg County, so we're, we would basically either be paying for this road ourselves or doing this as everything that we would do in Spartanburg County anyway, so it's kinda six and one, half dozen another, and it...
Is this...
That's what I mean, but if we...
Those funds are still available.
If we give all those funds over for this, though, I mean, we're, we're eliminating doing residential streets.
The Spartanburg County process is, is different from the Greenville County process. Um, the funds that we, that we're, it could be a possible reallocation, are our funds, and we can put them wherever in the city, whichever county that council chooses. Um, we were hoping to leverage it to match with Greenville County. We were hoping to leverage the match with Greenville County, but they limited that to half of what we had hoped for. So that did free up, you know, that two hundred thousand dollars that council can choose which county to put it in. The road money from Spartanburg County, in that program, they use an internal match to dollars that are dedicated to us. Then they also have the CTC pot that we can apply for, so we would use, or are suggesting we possibly use our funds to match the CTC fund for the fifty-fifty match, which is outside of the road paving program for Spartanburg County also.
We would always seek to try to get additional funding from either side.
Kind of hard to build a quality, take money away from residential streets to put down on.
Excellent observation, because, yes, it's not less than we've done before, we hoped to do more.
And we've got two hundred thousand freed up that we thought we were gonna use as a match, right?
Correct. That we're not gonna use as a match.
We have excess funds budgeted to do it. And the possibility we can get it done for less than the full cost anyway.
Okay, I...
Let's see.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so it's not gonna affect the streets that are lined up to be done?
We just hope to go...
I think that's kinda what we're gonna say to Jay, yes.
I've got no problem with staff proceeding and bringing us finalized cost and recommendation about what it's gonna, how we're gonna pay for it.
And I would look at all options as well, from enforcement to reach out to the state.
Yeah, and the recommendations in regards to how we can enforce or slow down and help the traffic situation. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Next item of new business this evening is a discussion led by Councilmember Lee Demus regarding towing fees and our current ordinance. Mr. Demus, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've received several calls about our towing fees and our existing ordinance, and I was told that our fees weren't adequate, and we weren't keeping, yes, sir, can you believe it? And that we weren't keeping pace with other municipalities and counties.
I appreciate you telling.
Well, there were several calls, and I told them that I would definitely take a look at it, and I told Mr. Driggers about putting this item on the agenda, and he suggested, well, he actually called me in and said, "I wanna better understand what you're trying to accomplish by, you know, talking about the fees and possibly making an adjustment." And he had Chief Hamby come in, and Officer Blackwood came in, is handling the towing right now, and they've actually uncovered a lot of things, because it's been almost ten years since we've had this discussion, and they've uncovered a lot of things in the ordinance that, has it been, it's not been ten years?
Uh-uh, they was in here before, and it was a little, it wasn't all right, because they all came.
Well, they...
You know what I'm saying? They all came, and they all complained, and they got, and they got an increase in, too.
They got an increase in the fee?
Mm-hmm.
Based on the num, they basically did a little bit of digging, and they pulled up Malden, Simpson, Bills, Spartanburg County, Greenville County, and the state, and some of the others, and we are behind, we haven't kept pace with making increases through the years on the fee.
So what is, what do we allow them to charge up to?
Two hundred? No, it's more than that. Nah, they were...
I thought the max was two...
It's in your package. We're gonna read it. Blackwood's max is two hundred.
Yeah, so there's a big difference between a violation and an accident, and we kinda talked through some of those things, and I actually talked through the ordinance, and they said that they believed it was time for us to update some of the language in the ordinance, that it was definitely antiquated, and time to clear some of those things up. But they also talked about the fact that we've got so much more traffic in the city now, and they feel like it might be time to increase the level of sophistication by the haulers in order to increase the requirements of what's necessary in order to haul in the city, that there have been a lot of calls that have gone out over the last, over the last few years that have gone unanswered, and it's taking resources from dispatch who could be answering emergency calls, and that we're also having to perform audits on multiple companies right now. And I, after the discussion, I said, "Well, maybe it's time that we come up with a plan a little bit cleaner," and they suggested maybe mimicking more, something more along the lines of a franchise that's been used in other cities, where you kinda set the mandatory or the best case scenario for the citizens, where the hauler has a pretty high level of service responsibility, there's not a lot of grandfathering in multiple lots, and hauling out of the city and different things like that.
Well, so what are they asking for, then, please? Just put it out for bid?
And we're not at that point. When we reviewed it, we asked the lieutenant to review that area. For example, I think, what was it? We require them to accept, collect telephone calls from our dispatch. That's just an example of an antiquated provision in our ordinance. So what the PD has asked is if they could go through the entire ordinance, make sure that those things, that it's updated, the fee structure, the police department takes no position in the fee structure, that is a decision of council. But we do think in administering the program, that there are some updates to that ordinance that need to be made, and so we thought it would be a good opportunity that we can present some comparative data to where we are, where our surrounding communities are, where the South Carolina Highway Patrol is, relative to those towing fees. And then we also, we're letting, we advised that we would like to revisit the towing list. I think they said we have about seventeen record companies that are on the towing list. Many of those we have to contact. We'll call them, they don't respond, we call, they don't respond, we call, they don't respond, we take them off the list, they have a certain period of time, they can come back on the list. We're, it's not the best use of nine-one-one emergency dispatch services. And so we are looking at, is there a possibility of considering that more as a franchise opportunity, that we set the parameters of what it takes to operate that service in the city, and what does that company then provide to us in a license fee to be able to provide that service? And we may would go to three or four providers instead of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen providers. And none of that's in stone, we're just asking for the opportunity to visit that and bring that to council in an auction format, so that council could give directions to the PD of how you would like for us to proceed.
Do we keep a record of the ones that don't respond to the call?
We do.
Why do we have to put the ones that, I mean, if they don't respond, then it's clearly...
Because the ordinance allows them to...
So we can change the ordinance?
Yes, we can change the ordinance, yeah.
You know that.
And I think that's part of how do we clean some of that up.
And I understand that if you've got, if we've got antiquated parts in our works, that definitely needs to be, I don't know if they get cleaned up like you say, but where do they stand on their fees?
We're a little low relative to the market. We're, it averaged anywhere from, I'm trying, about thirty to fifty dollars.
I mean, it wasn't bad. So I, for one vehicle accident, the max is two hundred dollars, so they're gonna charge two hundred bucks, right?
Correct.
Well, now, personal experience, I've had a truck pulled from Pickens County to Greer, and that was one twenty-five. And I had...
Was it involved in an accident?
No.
This does not affect any...
I understand that, but it's all, just like they would on a wreck, they come out, they had to pull it up on a rollback, and then I had one pulled off 385, it's fifty bucks. And so...
Well, we have a maximum of a hundred dollars for that particular thing, for a non-accident-related towing, but there are...
I understand what it is, that's a vehicle that maybe has had a violation, someone can stop DUI, the vehicle has to be removed.
It's not like you personally...
But if you, but if you are not involved in an accident, you're not issued a citation, and you desire to have a pull, you can contract that with anyone, and you can negotiate that price, however you can best do that. Our ordinance does not regulate that type of a wrecker haul. It only regulates that which was involved in an accident, and that which is involved in a citation.
Looks like when you go comparing fees, it would be prudent to see what insurance companies say is the norm for the state.
What we have found in that discussion is that they, their response is, we do believe that there are times that we're taking advantage of, but we also do not have the resources to verify everything that was involved in that pull. And so typically, they pay that which was submitted unless it is deemed excessive.
Most of them, most of the insurance family don't pay a certain amount, you know, any kind of full bill.
And that varies by company.
And on a commercial policy, add whatever towing amount, how much you want them to cover, so, but...
Well, to the councilman's point, I remember the last time we dealt with this, it was a bit of an issue, I'm trying to recall, I don't remember that we did that in this building, though, so I'm wondering if it has been eight or ten years since we've reexamined it. Maybe one of those issues that we ought to take a look at every three to five years just to keep it from being so much of a jump every time we do it, but I certainly got no issue with taking another look at it. I know it's been at least probably seven years since we've done it, so it's probably about time. I know one of the issues that we had last time, and it may be something we wanna take a look at again, is that part of the reason we had seventeen wrecker services on there was that people didn't have a single wrecker registered under two or three different names or companies, or using two trucks to create eight different companies with. I know we addressed that by supposedly you've gotta have a yard for every company, but I'm not sure that we've got the time or ability to monitor that as closely as we should, so... And even the last time, they had some people on more than one wrecker service, they had multiple, and that was grandfathering.
Multiple, multiple, multiple vehicles under multiple companies under one owner.
And they had the lot side by side, and put the...
I don't have an issue with that, I mean, that's, you know, yeah, but it, we wanna do what's best for our citizens to get, we probably ought to, we definitely revisit the ordinance to go over it, figure out how, whether it's bids for two or three operators to have the whole thing, or bids to have one operator have the whole, whatever we wanna do, but I think we need to properly look at it.
It appears there's some consensus to have another look at, so we'll...
Our intent would be to have something prepared to bring back to you by the first meeting in November.
Sounds good. We appreciate it, thank you. Anything else, Mr.?
That's it, that's it.
We'll move on then to the last item under new business, which is a bid summary for the HVAC at Victor Jim. Ms. Cunningham, you've got a presentation for us?
Uh, no, I'm just, uh...
No, just your recommendation.
No, just my talk. If you would please refer to the attached bid summary sheet, that I do have. You'll see that we have two bidders for this project, included in the bid packet, we asked for two bids from each vendor, one for units that include heat, which is of course preferred, and one without. The two bidders were RSI Carolina and Tuck and Howell. RSI Carolina was the low bidder for units that included heat for a total of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Our overall budget to complete this project is seventy-five thousand dollars. This project was posted on the city's vendor registry website, enlisted in the South Carolina Business Opportunities, or referred to as SKEBO, and construct, connect. RSI Carolina and Tuck and Howell were the only two companies that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting that we held on Tuesday, July the 23rd. RSI Carolina has performed many projects for the Parks and Recreation Department in the past, and their performance has been exceptional, professional, I'm confident with their ability to provide quality product and service. And with council's approval, I would ask that you would allow us to award this project to RSI Carolina.
Council, that comes as a recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Is I have a second? Any further discussion or questions?
Why is there no bid with heat from Tuck and Howell?
They just didn't give us one, I'm not sure. We explained it in the mandatory pre-bid meeting, but I guess they opted not to provide that.
Well, I think you would need heat, huh? I'm not...
Did you just think there was gonna be a big gap between the two?
Uh, you mean as far, between the two companies?
No, he didn't like, why was you, why was you...
Well, we did, we just weren't quite sure, so we would prefer heat, we just wanted to make sure we could afford it.
Okay. We had an alternative, providing heat in a facility.
Yes.
That we have the existing units.
But that doesn't mean for air, right?
No, ma'am.
They don't, it's just, we're just looking at heat.
We just have heat currently now.
Oh, okay.
The units that we have are fairly old units, so we really wanted to, while we had the opportunity, if we could go ahead and have air conditioning and heat.
So it will be a combination of heat and...
Yes, ma'am.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Demus?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alworth?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, there's one item of executive session requested this evening, and I'll entertain a motion to enter an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session. Executive session to discuss the personnel matter pertaining to the Building and Development Standards Department as allowed by state statute, section thirty-four dash seventy-eight-one.
And I'm gonna take a second to that.
Second.
Any discussion in that regard? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Demus?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alworth?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, in the executive session, we have considered a personnel matter pertaining to the Building and Development Standards Department as allowed by state statute thirty-four dash seventy-eight-one. Don't hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Sound motion?
Second.
And the second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Demus?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alworth?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Stand adjourned.